Gobert Council meeting for Tuesday, January the 3rd to order. Please stand with the flags, Wood.
Do you believe in the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Mike, who got your road power tonight? Sergeant Casey is here with us, his first official position. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. And we have on the staff Laura and John again. We have four council members. Chuck Lee is not here tonight. He submitted his resignation this morning. And so sad to see him go. He was sad to go, but he wasn't evidently happy with what he was accomplishing. So I accepted his resignation this afternoon. So we have four council members and we will proceed. Oh, excuse me, we have three and one half council members. So we will proceed to have four very shortly. Let's take a look at the agenda. Roll up a little bit. We've got one more item to go that'll be a surprise. And I want to take a look at the agenda and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
A whole second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we will get immediately to the first item, which is the office of Robert Strong. And then so can you do it?
Here's your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Robert Strong.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform...
That I will faithfully and impartially perform...
And discharge the duties of the office of the City of Gobert Council, position number four.
Discharge my duties of the office of the City of Gobert Council, position four.
For a four-year term according to the law to the best of my ability.
For a four-year term according to law to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Got to get the cheese. Got it, thank you.
I gotta sign something or do something?
Okay, we have one more little issue. Sergeant Martin, could you please step front, Denise and Ray Coleman?
Give us a second, second.
Sure you don't?
Yes, right.
Good.
This light will be from...
Who's standing over here? Because this is the, I think, the real place to do it. You stand in the middle? Good.
Get over out of that bright light, please, a little bit.
Are you happy now?
I'm happy.
Good, okay. We've had pretty good years with Sergeant Martin and he's moving on. And it's been a fun three years, a lot of humor and a lot of good results. And so we'd like to give you a certificate of appreciation. And from the city and from the citizens around. And I'll show it to the citizens. And what it has on here is a little graph. It's how the crime has decreased in the three years that Sergeant Martin has been here. And thanks to Ray Coleman for getting the information and tracking it and generating this up. So again, congratulations or wherever it is you're going next and have a good life.
Let's have one more picture, Rob. Hold that, Sergeant. We got it.
Thank you very much. Better pictures. Is what?
Better pictures. Without the agenda in the background.
Oh, is that what it was? Oh, okay. Well, now we know, all right. Well, we're going on that. Just put this next on the agenda. Hold the mayor's report. Thank you. Don't really have anything specific to report. We covered those issues here. And so we run on the staff reports. John?
Yeah, Rich has been doing a good job. Watch the electricians that are bringing out at the well. This week, we're switching over a bunch of panel boxes. Going to do a generator load test on Friday. And the project should be substantially completed, meaning up and running. Something next week. And after that, there's a little stop.
That's better project. Sergeant Casey, your first official Gobert report?
My first official Gobert report is I'm here. Sergeant Martin has the, he's put together your notes for the end of the year and the assets that all did. But again, that's his thunder and so if you want a presentation on that, look at that.
At a first glance, it looks like it was pretty calm December.
Yes.
Well, that's wonderful. I mean, that's, a blank page is the best report you can put out. And I believe that Ray Coleman has sent this past year or will send this down on the lock watch. Is that correct, Ray?
So does I get the final version?
Yep. Okay. So, and then Deputy McKee did help with the search fire and start-up and that was some fire. And so, real surprising. No one got injured, but an old building is now toast, as they say. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council comments. We're gonna put the rookie on the stage.
I'm glad to be here and be of service and I hope that you do a good job. Ruth?
I just want to say, thank you, Rob, for your service here. He's got some big boots to fill. The little graph on that certificate that you have, you might want to make a copy of that because he's gonna have to keep that graph. You know, we don't want to go in that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure having you here.
Appreciate it.
I'll miss you, Rob.
Hey, Dee.
What is that? I'm really gonna miss Rob. It was kind of nice having two Martins on the councils. It's him. I don't know how much we were involved with getting the lights back on, but good job if you don't, we're doing any of that. Just kind of...
He'd be running around. Our generator, I was all three rounds, fine, called through all of it.
And we got good service from PUD on down trees, so that was, I was real pleased with that.
Did we have, Ray, did you hear what the top guests were?
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three, no. I figured it was over fifty. Let's push another game first. Anyway, Happy New Year, everybody.
Yeah.
Yes, well, Happy New Year as well. And I was kind of stunned that Chuck had resigned. I think he needs a big hold here. And so I'm a little disappointed in that, but... And other than that, I really have no other comments today.
Thank you. Then it's time for citizen comments. If someone would like to have to call me to make a comment, you've got your three minutes.
Can I just make a comment from here?
If you talk really loud, this is Dorothy Croshaw. Yes, ma'am?
Dorothy Croshaw, could they please use their microphones?
Am I using the microphone?
Everyone, sometimes you don't have it.
Okay. So move it within about two inches or... Move the microphone, it slides. All right, yes, ma'am. All right.
Ray Coleman, 203 19th Street. Yes, we're gonna miss Rob. However, I can't say that he was the best one because we have a really good one that just went in the other room too. That used to be a contract chief here, you know, so they are all in great company. And I am familiar with this gentleman here, having taken some classes from him in fact, right? As an FTO. Okay. And I'm sure will do well. The chart that you're talking about, I have that chart. I made it from real numbers. And I got beat up over it because I put 50% at the very bottom line and 100% at the very top line. And the mayor says, uh, since I'm going to have to sign this, it better be zero on the bottom. So it was redone. I did tell him it would be easier to change the name from his to mine and let it go. But then he also indicated that Bob Strong would kneel us on that one. So, is that right, Rob?
Never know.
That's a bad feature to do that, huh? Okay, welcome aboard, Dave.
Thank you.
Cookies here, too.
Well, yeah, we have coffee and hot water and cocoa and apple cider and cookies. Homemade cookies, okay. These are not store-bought. Liz looking. Okay, we'll go ahead and do the new business. The first one is the 2012 Buy Software Service. This is, we have agonized over all through 2011. And so, I'm gonna pull that up on the screen. This is the service agreement where you get what? Oh, you're sharing it. Not everyone has a copy, so... Yeah, what I did, I put one for each tune because I was starting to get cheap late in the day. And this is something we talked about last year and it is how much?
Four thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-seven cents?
Yeah. About four thousand dollars, I remember. And what it is, is for telephone support and upgrade support and so forth. Now, I've got a question because I don't know. Does this include the upgrade decisions? Okay, that's separate still. So this is a, I don't want to say pricey, but it is a very large integrated software program for handling our enterprise funds, the water fund, for doing all of the tracking, invoicing and so forth. And billing. So it's a single package for all of our finances. And we don't have much flexibility in doing anything differently unless we try to write our own system, which theoretically is doable. So did I cover that accurately enough for you?
So do you need a motion to sign or to...
Yeah, just leave a motion to have me sign the agreement.
So I'll make the motion that we allow the mayor to sign this agreement.
For the second?
Second motion?
Any discussion? Ken, you look like you're ready to roll.
No, I'm happy with it.
Okay. There's no further discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Next issue is 2012 projects. This is the list that we did back in September. See if you can do this. And updated a little bit. Okay, that's about right. I've kind of broken down the big categories. Something like half or maybe a little over half of our labor goes into the water enterprise system. And these are all the jobs that we have. We have two projects in, under the water system. The purpleish covered is for the water system plan update, which the first draft is done. It just needs to be reviewed and finalized. And the blue is the reservoir, the different factors of it. And this is again, who dot who's involved in it and what the general tasks are and how many different agencies get their fingers in the paint. Next one down is the safety program. Sherry has, sets up monthly training videos for a variety of things. And this, last year, we had an official training program. What was it for, John? Entry? You had the class here, the guy came in.
Flaggers.
Confine spaces, yeah. And make sure we meet the OSHA requirements. As far as streets go, we've got the sidewalk going in, which looks like it'll be finished in June. And it's funded by grant and we just got to push hard and hold budget. And then these are the other street function items. There's traffic sign reflect, retroactivity. And then we put on, John, I can't remember why, was that...
Basically, the state has came up with Borstang. Any new signs, they're a special material and they reflect a lot brighter. Daytime and nighttime, a lot more expensive. And we're supposed to start changing only those type of samples. Even old signs or just as we replace them? Basically, it's up in there right now that all signs are supposed to be changed out initially, period. But because of the cost involved, basically nothing's taking place yet.
So those are the new signs that are along?
New signs, old signs. I believe the new signs have that.
But it's not just probably two, right? It's all the signs.
Yes.
All signs in the state.
It's not related to safety, it's...
Well, it is related to safety in the aspect of the mortgage.
Right, understood that. But I mean, so there are traffic control signs where that would be the issue. And then the street signs, not necessarily, but to some degree.
All signs will be posted on the street.
So eventually, even the street names, it's gotta be highly influenced.
I think eventually that's all we're able to produce.
So that's some costs that we didn't talk about when we did the 2012 budget. And so we'll have to see how that, how fast we can implement that. Well, we need to probably talk to the state to see how much freeway we have as well. State's typically been pretty good about not coming in and just, you know, oh, here's a rule, you have to do it now. They tend to educate and help, so I'm always happy with that.
Are there any possibilities with grants for...
Hasn't been. Since everybody is having to do it, it might be a little thin getting grants, but I don't know. We haven't looked. Okay, the next one is stormwater. Now, we're separating streets and stormwaters as separate sub-funds, as separate funds. And so we're gonna need a stormwater utility ordinance. And that's something the council's gotta do. I'll prepare a package and then maybe work with a council person on developing a practical stormwater utility for Gobert. And I know Sultan did one that was very controversial at times in terms of the cost impact. And I am not in favor of unfunded mandates, so we'll try not to get that. And then what stormwater will cover? Will the storm drainage magnets on the streets? And I've got flood response in there. I'm not sure if that's where it goes, but that's where to put it. John, is there anything else under stormwater that you think we might get into this year?
No, I think the stormwater...
The next thing is general planning items. Where are we in the natural hazard plan update? I know you and Denise were working on it. Is it done? Is it gonna be done someday or what's the, is there a schedule on it yet? Earth and Denise?
I was reading, sorry.
Do you have, can you, can you off the top of your head give us a status on the natural hazard plan update? If you and John were working on it late night. And could you step up here to the microphone so we can track you? We didn't give you preparation time, so just best over to you, you can.
Um, we've done our part and handed ours in. And they're waiting for the different municipalities to turn all theirs in.
Okay, good. So we're waiting on, is it the county?
Yeah, well, different people have to turn them in, so...
But I mean, the county is the, is the central repository. Okay. So we can blame it on the county for a while. All right, thank you very much.
We've done our part.
Good, appreciate it.
Go now.
We've got the gas line ordinance. That's actually the gas pipeline ordinance. And that's gonna be pretty simple, I'm gonna draft something up. Williams Pipeline has a lot of information and they cover most of the real safety problems on it. And our part is to make sure that people don't encroach or dig up pipelines or cause trouble. And the only pipeline segment in Gobert goes through a native growth area and through Moonlight Drive. And then through a couple of plats just east of Moonlight Drive. So, and all the owners know it's there and they've been notified nine ways from Sunday. Sultan is working on it. They've got a lot bigger stretch of pipeline, plus they've got undeveloped plats that someone wants to develop. So they have a bit more stringent set of problems to work on. But we'll get that knocked out pretty quickly. Then we got the comprehensive plan update. That's really a planning commission. And John, they start, that's gonna be a big piece of work. We haven't started on it. Our comprehensive plan is probably not that bad off as it is, but we need to update it and see where we're going. We've got the shoreline master plan update, which is going on. It's a Department of Ecology thing and funded by the Department of Ecology and being run well by a consultant. John, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, basically, it's a three-year plan and I took a big portion draft to the planning commission. And they reviewed it, you know, a couple of the citizens on the community reviewed it. They made comments, all comments went to the HPL. And they're going to incorporate comments into the draft plan from that section of the types, the streams and that sort of stuff. And as soon as that's done, that draft will be going to the Department of Ecology. Department of Ecology attended the planning commission and also...
Next up, the mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Because you have two of these items highlighted and you're covering more than just the highlighted items. My question is, what is the highlight?
Yellow means it's a council activity. Something the council's gotta do. And the other colors were grouping together, I should have grouped together...
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, misgrouping together the contract and the DOE grant and the update. Those three things should have been grouped together with white blue or something.
So those, those that are not highlighted are just regular items or...
Well, no, it's just, they're not connected items. Street sweeping is not connected, necessary street magnets. But, but if you see the blue, that's the finish the sidewalk, the Western Pacific Engineers and the DOT funding.
I did, I did catch that.
Okay.
But we got into the yellow and we're covering things that weren't highlighted, that's where the confusion.
Oh, okay, well, yellow means it's something the council's gotta work on.
Council's gotta work on it.
And what I'd like to do while does this, on the Duvall council, each council person takes a particular area. And that becomes that person's area of expertise and they chase it down. And so we're, we'd like to do that, have everyone get into a comfortable area. Ken's doing finance and we'll, we'll be working on that a little bit. Because again, we don't have this big staff to do research and such. And in the past, the city council has done some background research and looked at the alternate ordinances, legality of it and so forth. The, you know, the stuff that's not in yellow, the stuff that's basically staff work. Now, we come down to the FEMA biological impact rules. And that's the 250-foot offset from the normal high water mark. And it pretty well takes in everything the shoreline management plan does plus. And it's sort of a simple rule. Right now, Bob's backyard is in a 250-foot section. And if Bob wants to do something, he comes to the city for a permit. And he says, in my 250-foot offset area, I would like to, the city says, no. And so it's a real simple thing to enforce. Basically, if it's not feet, like at the end of your ankles, there's not much you can take back there. And FEMA set it up, everybody gave their, each other doing it. And then another lawsuit popped up and FEMA is now involved in another lawsuit that says they're not doing enough. But basically, the way it affects Gobert is gonna be negative in some areas. Someone came and said, look, I've got this piece of property at US 2, I'm thinking about buying it and I wanted to put this on it clear and put a house. And I looked and I said, well, that's the 250-foot mark goes onto the other side of US 2. And you can't, there's an old decrepit garage there, you can repair the garage, but that's it. So, you know, there's probably another piece of property that'll end up being owned by the county for back taxes. But that's...
Is this 250-foot rule cast in stone?
Yeah, as far as I can tell. I mean...
Oh, yeah. Well, the last time we talked, you know, I had people here, there was still some discussion about it.
It's Snohomish County trying to get it moved back to 150 feet. And they evidently broke their spirit on it. And, but basically, as far as anybody knows, it's 250 feet. Yeah, that's, that's what they get. So if you live along Main Creek like I do, what you got is what you got.
This isn't standing right with my plan.
You wanna, you wanna turn...
Yeah, I'm... Turn on the... Strong on the planning commission. I might do the impression that this is still a work in progress and nothing is cut in stone. Um, there is still a lot of work that is going on on this. I'm not saying that the 250 is not gonna happen, but it is, to best my knowledge, it's still a work in progress.
Well, FEMA is working as if it is a done deal. We got a form to fill out about floodplain, you know, whatever they call the thing now. Permits in the last few years that we had to pull in. And we did submit how we would work this on a permit, a permit basis. And again, it's, the last letter we got is that they're being sued again.
Right.
And so, you know, it's, it's everybody's sort of stuff.
And it all goes in whales and they don't have any of those.
No, no, uh-uh, no, it goes to salmon.
Oh, and whales, that was a good part of it too. But long story short is that it's not done. And when it does get done, it's another one of these wonderful ordinances that has no one to enforce it.
No, we've already...
It's gonna be your job to say no, because there's gonna be somebody else that's gonna say no, but they're not around. You don't know if that is yet.
Yeah, well... Yeah, we're not gonna rent an airplane and fly over the area looking for violations, obviously. Like I said, but people come in and talk about what they can do. And we, like I said, on one flat, I've already talked to the potential buyer. And he's not gonna buy it for that reason. And as far, I haven't talked to the person at the county who's doing it, but I'll try to remember to give her call this week. And see where she thinks it is. As far as I know, as of September 22nd, it was a done deal. And the lawsuit is not about...
No, because our timeline isn't even ran up on it, so we still have more meetings. We've got one coming up in like...
You're talking about shoreline management?
Yeah, that has nothing to do... Are we talking mine, oh, yes. That has nothing to do with the 250 feet.
Yeah, you're talking shoreline management, this is something different.
Okay.
This is, yeah. This, this slurps up, this is shoreline management.
I hope they were joining in, but they're not.
No, uh-uh. Nope. One got started before all this happened and then the lawsuit hit and then this came down. So, and again, I'm not sure exactly what the bad news is. If you ignore it, I'm not sure exactly what happens. You lose the ability to get flood insurance. But, you know, it's still vast amount of confusion. So, and there may be some new ordinances based on... So, and there may be some new ordinances based on these FEMA rules, that will be coming up.
So this is under the biological impact rules and the new ordinance for FEMA, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, but again, that's, uh, one of the 10,000 rules we have to live with. Except there are probably 12,000 now. Okay, moving on to building. Now, this is the normal permitting and inspections. Oh, we need to get some update for the permit forms. They're sort of old, they're 1990 vintage. And it can cause some confusion. And I'm not certain we're gonna be seeing any subdivision developments anywhere in the near future. We're pretty much developed out here. There is some other land available. But I don't see anybody putting their money out anytime in the near future. Then we go to the finance group and that's just all of the cost of doing business of having a city. And that's just enormous. We go down to miscellaneous. That's sheriff support and animal control, parks. Uh, we've got a limited park budget now. Sherry's 20% time, which means basically she picks up trash two times a week and then she monitors the, uh, the farmatory guys who come in. And they do all of the, the big projects. And there's a little bit left over for mowing. And emergency management, uh, again, Denise keeps that going. And what we're, what we're really looking for is to make sure we're set up. We are scheduled for an earthquake. And so that's where we're trying to make sure that if something like that happens, we have some plan for, for responding to it. And we will basically be shut off and be an island for some number of days. And then, uh, and I should have taken emergency management, DM, container units, probably grouped them together. Although it's sort of, you know, when you get into that sort of thing, it's also sheriff and everything else. And the rest of that, uh, is general work. And then we have the employee handbook update. Update the fee schedule for the recycle and update the fee schedule for stormwater utility. And I need to do some work on that. I need to give the employee handbook stuff to Chris and provide that he can work with. And we've already talked about what recycle needs to be. I just need to do some calculations and give it to a council person to bless and present. And then the stormwater utility is a bit more worse. But, uh, that's, anyway, that's definitely listed and, yes, sir?
So when we start to assign or when you start to assign or when council members volunteer for certain items up here, can we put their name on the spreadsheet so that we know what council members are responsible for that?
Yeah.
And I will volunteer for the stormwater utility and recycle as well as the handbook.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I would like this printed out as much as possible. Appreciate it. The employee handbook's gonna be a piece of work, I can assure you. I mean, you know how thick that is. And it requires, it requires almost clean paper start, in my opinion, and a lot of background research. So.
Okay.
And, uh, okay, and I'm not, I don't wanna sign it tonight?
No, but I mean, my, I would suggest that the stormwater utility as well as, you know, maybe the recycle be a collaboration of folks, not just one person.
This will all be a collaboration. One person will take the lead and, and one council will take the lead. And then four council will complain about his work. So that's the.
So the utility ordinance for stormwater and the fee schedule should fall in the same.
Yeah, yeah, because what we do, we have a fee schedule. We have ordinance to say, okay, it's, here's what we do, here's what we do, we charge for it. And then you go to the fee schedule and see what you charge for. At one time, we had fees and ordinances, but, you know, you have to do an ordinance change to, change the dog pack losses. So we're, we're trying to involve the fees into the fee schedule, which is changed our resolution. So it's a lot cheaper.
So can we?
Anyway, yeah, the stormwater is, hey, how do we come up with a practical stormwater utility for the city of Goldar?
Okay.
And particularly, the reason it's gonna be difficult is that we can do a one-year stormwater utility. Pretty simple, because we know what we gotta do, but then we got years two, three and four we have to plan for. And that's gonna take some real cogitation and some go back and forth. So I, what I'm planning on doing is the next regular council meeting is I will have those packets ready and we will either have time somebody to volunteer or we will volunteer someone at the next council meeting. So we'll be thinking about what your interest is and how much time you have to work on. And there are probably omissions in this, I'm sure there are. So if you think of something that's a project or something you said we'd do last year, just let me know and we'll keep updating the list. So, we've got stuff to do. All right, thank you.
Do I have a question?
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I have very old eyes.
Oh, where's the mid one?
Ah, okay. Thank you.
I got, I printed, I printed it out. And I thought it was coming out 11 by 17, but it came out eight and a half by 11. Magic's on. Okay, we've done that. So now, we're gonna go to executive session procedures. And this might be pretty simple. When you go in the executive session, you discuss confidential things, you discuss, and there's a limited number of things you can discuss. One of which is litigation, active litigation, potential litigation. And I checked the rules on it and, uh, you can't talk about what happened in executive session. You can come out and take action, okay? And that action then is, of course, open record. Uh, if you don't take action or anything, you can't talk about what's in there. And I checked with MRSC, I said, okay, under what conditions, this is crazy. Under what conditions can you waive the confidentiality in executive session? And he said, there is, there is no law in state of Washington that lets you do that. So you're forever constrained to never talk about it. I'm gonna press for that, but nonetheless, they didn't ask my opinion when they wrote the law. And then I said, okay, and he's, and all he thought, he said, well, maybe, there's no case law on it, no examples on it. The council could pass an ordinance saying that upon 100% approval of all the council people that took part in the executive session, you can waive confidentiality. And this goes back again to, back to the old attorney-client thing. If you waive one thing of a subject, you may have to waive everything of a subject, which again is another complication that makes things difficult. But he said, no one's ever done it, so we didn't know. So basically, uh, that's the, that's the situation. So we don't, we're going into executive session next Tuesday. And we will, so that's just, we'll let you know that's what the rules are. As far as I can tell, if you violate it, it's a $500 fine. If you hold the meeting improperly, it's a $100 fine. So, you know, I don't know if the laws make sense. They don't make sense anymore, like I said, but in that's my opinion. So I just wanna give everybody that caution, because it's extremely rigorous in how the laws are. Okay, now you seem to hold the potential agenda for the, okay. What it looks like we're covering, because we have new council people of various terms. We're gonna have two sessions, an open session. And we're just gonna go down all of the lawsuits we've had, because it's been a very expensive journey. Uh, we'll have, you know, the major termination timeline. I went through and redug everything out on that. Where we went, the first block's lawsuit, second block lawsuit, so first forms, third block, fourth block, and the recall petition. And I will be giving you some documentation, well, in advance of that, so you can at least be reading it. We're gonna go into the second, in the closed session. And right now, there's like the second block, first forms, that appeal, appellate. And fourth block lawsuit will be, uh, the subject of discussion of basically where do we go from here? So those are the things, and anything, anything we can do in open session, we're gonna do in open session. And the closed sessions are, are gonna be as minimal as I can possibly make it. And so, that's, that's how we'll be working this. Any questions or comments? Okay, well, you'll get a bunch of boring reading material this week. Okay, thank you. Before we go to vouchers and such, any comments from the council? Okay, Ken, you're on.
All right, so, so, um, I have this, so I, because I understand that I have to, uh, I have to make a motion for approval before we can discuss. I have many things to discuss on the.
Yeah, but you, you make a motion, give a second, and then we go into discussion.
And, and I have to identify them by number and then total. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we do.
All right, so then I'll make a motion that the council approve. Vouchers 5000 through 5019 for a total of $28,954.79. 2011 vouchers, 16335 through 16336. 17000 through 17035 for a total of $212,709.76. And 2012 vouchers, 17036 through 17041 for a total of $6,584.47. Being a grand total of $248,249.2.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. You're on, okay. So, as we went through this, there were several vouchers that we had a question on. And, um, it's 17010, the Petro Systems, Petrocard Systems Incorporated. None, uh, none of the receipts had signatures on them, which I don't know if that's municipal code or what, but the agreement was that there should be signatures there. And each of these, the majority of these at least, were for premium Petro, which, which is not. None of the vehicles that we drive should require premium Petro.
Usually, when we go in and we don't get receipts, it just comes, you know, you carry it. Use a card, put the card in, put the gas, might be Johnny.
Is there a code assigned to each card?
Yeah.
So, so can we know who's got that card?
No, the cards are signed out each time they need gas.
Okay.
Um, so we know who's got the card. Um, and the machine does give receipts that can go back to the planner. Sherry has been doing that. She did not turn federal card receipts into your system.
Right, I think we need to, just for control of the budget, you need to have receipts. And you need to, you need to sign to ensure that you know who worked it for.
Well, the, the receipts are usually not signed by the person doing it. It's usually done by the supervisor, which would be general.
Yeah, but the problem is, if there's a problem like somebody for some reason started suddenly using premium fuel.
Yeah.
And if you don't know who did it, you're starting paying gas, and too, when there's only the, who's doing it.
Well, the risk, the law is in my office, I know the check.
Okay.
We're, we're not interested so much in, well, the cost isn't very much to begin with. And we're not interested in necessarily disciplining individuals, but we're interested in ensuring that we stick to our budget.
Can we start there now?
And I brought this up with Richard. So, um, then we also had some receipts from staples that had no signature on them.
So what?
Some receipts from staples that also had no signatures on them. And I guess that would fall under the same category. If we, if we want to retain the signatures on this, on the receipts, then we ought to do it consistently. Then the issue, um.
When we, okay, yeah. John, I even though we haven't done this in the past. I know whenever, when I was in regular, you know, private business and I, I did things. I would always write on the receipt what it was, why did it, sign and date, even though the receipt's got the dates on it now. And I don't see why we can't just do that as a routine basis. It's a habit thing. And I know this is not the only city that mysterious receipts show up. That was part of when I took the finance course, that was one of the things the accountant was talking about, was Johnny from the hardware store says, oh, by the way, your guy's charged us much money. Here's, here's my bill. And I said, what for? Oh, I don't know. Somebody came, I don't remember if it was Fred or Nancy. And so, you know, she was always fighting that. And so it's, uh, people that do things don't compliment to accounting procedures. And so it was just a matter of habit getting in there. But just a simple sign the first name and what it was for. Is that okay with you?
Yes, we got it.
Okay.
Then we had a motion in the previous session where we were to break out these vouchers that were for, for litigation. And I have several of those vouchers and they are not broken out here. Which we.
Well, that's what I thought 3641 was.
Well, I have 17027, 17028, 17029, 17030.
Well, let's look at the vouchers. You know, look. Okay. Oh, oh. What, that was asked for that there be two warrants. The warrant with everything, and then a second warrant for block, block two, recall block.
In other words, my understanding that we were approving the litigation vouchers on a separate one.
They're separate, yeah, that was what was agreed upon. That was what was asked for.
Was that motion ever, I, I know there was a motion on the table.
Right.
There was a second. It went into discussion and then we all agreed that we would not do that at that time.
I don't recall that we all agreed that we would not do that.
It, it didn't pass.
Well, it didn't pass?
It didn't pass.
Sorry.
That's why I did it that way, in case you wanted to exclude one of those vouchers.
Oh, okay.
However, I do agree with Ken. That, I, I like the way it's blocked out, where it's not mixed into this. It does have the title on the side of the general city, fourth block, block two, recall petition and block. And then on the third page, there is an attorney litigation, which doesn't tell us what that litigation was for.
Oh, no, it is. It's the bottom one.
It's, yeah, it was law alignment.
Oh, right there, block, that's the formation. My apologies, okay. So, I, I, I mean, I'm happy with the way this looks, but if, you know, if you've got another recommendation, at least this gives us an idea of what we're paying for, what lawsuit, where it's going, that kind of thing.
Right, again, though, it's, it's a huge expense to the city. And I think that, um, that we ought to give it due scrutiny. And if we're, we're gonna, if we're gonna evaluate it in the whole, in the body of all of the vouchers, it doesn't really give us the freedom to say that, I guess we can make a motion on a, on a case-by-case basis where we can separate them out.
You can always amend your motion to void out that certain.
All right.
Now, the next, now, next Tuesday, when we go in the executive session, that will be exactly, that will be one of, that will be the, uh, the decision on proceeding, we'll have a direct. all have a direct impact on that. Now, we did get sections for about seven thousand dollars last week. So, we are, we do have the first step taken toward recovery, some, some of our costs.
Okay, so I wanna go, um, then directly to one seven zero-two-eight for ten thousand dollars, one sixty-nine and forty-nine cents. A portion of that voucher showed that it was voided. And then, um, there was a balance of nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. And then, uh, later we got a billing for, um, seven thousand three hundred and ninety-two fifteen. There was some confusion as to just what, what those vouchers really contained.
Okay, let me look at this.
Because I think we were double billed.
That's a previous balance.
Yeah, so there's a previous balance that came forward. There was, there's a voided part of one voucher and then a previous balance carried forward. And where did the previous balance come from? That's another question.
That would be the previous set of vouchers, wouldn't it?
Vouchers.
So, we'd have to go back one set of vouchers to look. Now, let me, but, uh, if we didn't pay it before, or did we pay it already?
You know, I, I'd have to check. Because the way they came in, I could get them to correct the bill. And that's the direction they'll take.
Well, I see what Ken is saying. Because the actual bill was, the actual current word was three hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. And then there's the previous balance, which theoretically, we would have paid off at the previous voucher set. So, there is a possibility that, uh, we weren't paid this.
That's why I'm gonna check.
Oh, okay. So, so, then that would, okay.
Would require me to amend my motion to exclude one of this particular voucher?
That is correct. So, do you wish to amend your motion to exclude voucher one seven zero-two-eight?
I do.
And.
I will amend my second. I agree.
Okay, you can pause, set that moment down. Okay. Total amount was two forty-eight, two forty-nine, oh, two. And we're subtracting, which is gonna, oh, yeah, ten, one sixty-nine, dot forty-five. So, it's two thirty-eight, oh seventy-nine, fifty-seven.
Yes, agreed.
Two thirty-eight, oh seventy-nine, dot fifty-seven. Okay.
So, was this just an oversight that we missed?
Laura, uh, was working on this on Saturday and she couldn't, was cross-checking with the attorney because they were close.
Wouldn't we have record, though, whether or not we've already paid them or not?
The thing is, they changed because of the bills were being, um, they were mixing up the lawsuits on each of their invoice numbers. So, they went through and changed it. So, I have to make sure that they, um, didn't overcharge us when they switched them on.
So, so she's gonna do a check this week. Terry is back and Terry is the one who does the invoicing. And, uh, she was out Friday. And, uh, nobody ended up.
So, then there's further discussion in the two thousand and twelve vouchers. There's the Fugitive Sound Clean Air Agency bill for nine hundred and thirteen dollars, uh, voucher one seven zero three six. And the question came up in the finance committee, what happens if we just don't pay this?
We don't have a choice.
Well, we keep hearing that, but what happens if you just don't pay it?
There's an RCW. Maybe we'll pay it.
They'll probably be sued by the state.
Yeah.
So, that was the question. Is there an RCW? There is an RCW. So, we'll leave that alone. Um, and then, and then the question of, and I think you have an answer for this as well, the Washington Association of, uh, I know we had that. That's third, uh, that was, um, you know what that is. It was the A W C.
Yep.
Um, what is the A W C? That's the Washington Cities, Association of Washington Cities. And again, what happens, um, and that's not a, well, that's, that's one thousand fifteen dollars. And, um, that's voucher one seven zero three eight. Again, what happens if we just don't pay that?